Special meeting for August 29th, 1:30 PM to discuss the 2023-2024 fiscal year. I need a motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
Have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion? All in favor? We'll now move to our presentation agenda. Mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. You've got your packet here. It's in microscopic font right now. So basically, we went from here, the big font, to this little one. So that's the data. I think we, from our last conversations, we actually reviewed insurance. Correct me if I'm wrong, but there was, you know, the bottom line, I think it was about 1.5 million added to the expenses, almost all insurance, pretty much health insurance. So we figured out where we were going to be. I think there's been a couple of meetings, and that was the addition. We went from 79 million to 81 on expenses. And if you look at the top and the bottom, you know, cash balance to ending, it would wind up with 1.4, and that's inclusive of that addition in health insurance. And we'll be here to answer questions about the whole package. And that concludes my report.
All right. We'll now move to council reports. Start on my left, Mr. Lawrence.
No report.
Mr. Deming. Mr. Tisdale.
No report.
Mr. Glavin.
No report.
I have no report. We'll now move to our public agenda, citizens' comments. We'll have a total allotted time of 45 minutes. Each person will be allowed three minutes to speak. When you come forward, please state your name and address and sign in the paper on the desk, and whenever the bell rings, your time is up. We'll start on my left-hand side, your right-hand side. Anyone on my left-hand side, would you like to come forward? All right, we'll start right over here. Please state your name and sign in.
And address.
My name is Jennifer Nall, and I am at 13339 Roxbury Place in Gulfport.
That's all right. You're welcome here. I know you're from Gulfport. I suppose we welcome you.
My name is Jennifer Nall, and I am the Youth Services Librarian at the Wool Market Library. Considering the proposal to close the West Biloxi Library and drastically reduce funding for the remaining locations in the city, I am here on behalf of our patrons in Biloxi and our library staff to make council well aware of the important services we offer your constituents. Public libraries provide free access to the Internet, educational resources, news, and historical records. Public libraries have a mission to foster an environment of learning and professional development. We work with the homeless and underserved populations, helping with job searches and checking out material for educational training. These services help lift people out of poverty and improve the quality of their lives. Most important is the work that we do with the children in our community. Our weekly storytimes teach families the value of reading and independent learning. Youth Services Librarians are trained professionals in early childhood development and teach children practical skills that prepare them for the classroom. Biloxi libraries also offer free passes to families for the Lynn Meadows Discovery Center, and our summer reading programs help keep kids active and engaged during their break from school. Early reading leads to improved brain development, and for children and families who cannot afford pre-K tuition, these services help to produce critical thinking skills. Moreover, children with special needs, medically fragile children who can't go to school, and homeschool children frequently use the public libraries in Biloxi. Without these resources, homeschool children will struggle with having a more enriching education. On behalf of our dedicated library staff in Biloxi and our community of patrons, I ask in closing that the council keep the West Biloxi Library open so it can continue to serve the people in that area and publicly and fully fund the city's public libraries. 21st century public libraries are much more than places to just find a good book. They are public resources and information centers providing access to valuable resources for generations of Gulf Coast residents. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else on my left? All right, please come forward. State your name and sign in.
James Pennington, Back Bay Mission. I live at 176 Travia Avenue. I am in Biloxi, George, just to let you know. I just want to say thank you for maintaining our 50,000 for Back Bay Mission for this budget year, and I've got a spreadsheet here of the 50,000 that we spent already this year, and the homes, the addresses, and the amount. So, thank you, thank you, thank you very much. And if you have any questions later, feel free to let me know.
All right, thank you so much. Thanks for what y'all do. Right, anyone else on my left? Okay. We'll get all of you, so just whoever wants to come next.
Hi, my name is Terry Clifford, and my address is 327 Randall Drive in Biloxi. And I'm just here to say that I support keeping the library open. I've lived in Biloxi all my life and grew up in West Biloxi in Bay Vista, currently live there also in the library system. I went to the library with my family all the time, and I just would hate to see that end of town lose that valuable resource of the library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Arlene Canan, 135 Benaki Avenue, Biloxi, of course. I'm here on behalf of so many disgruntled and unhappy citizens who you all represent regarding the comment that was made about closing the branch, the library branch in West Biloxi. Number one, I can't believe that it was said. It's just like a couple years ago, another councilman said, "Well, we should tear down the Sanger." We should not be tearing down our buildings. We need to be repairing them. Just like Mayor Gillich said, he made comments about the revenue that casinos have had record revenue the last couple of years. Well, that means if they have record revenue, then we get extra revenue, and this is what we need to be doing, is maintaining our properties and fix this building. It's not setting example for the young people of tearing down good buildings and especially a library. Having new projects like the community center, which we have other community centers, and take care of what we have in the city. It's just like so many things that we do. We have wonderful projects, but we do not maintain them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person on my left, come forward.
My name is Julia Montgomery. My address is 757 Moni Vista Drive. I'm Julia Montgomery, a Recreation Assistant at Keesler Air Force Base's McBride Commons, formerly known as the McBride Library. Libraries are a major resource in the community, and I see its impact, especially from the perspective of the military side of it. To start, I stated earlier that we're a former library. The only physical library on base was shut down in 2014, and almost all the books were donated away to make room for other facilities to take over. Today, in our current iteration, we have some of the amenities of a library except for the physical books, formerly trained library staff, and extended resources outside of a digital format. Many people come into our facility, especially military spouses, their children, airmen, and veterans, who are looking for a physical library with books and book-related programs such as storytimes, read-a-thons, and such. Because of this, I always suggest to them to go to the West Biloxi Library, which is located less than two miles from the pass road gate of Keesler Air Force Base and less than a mile from the West Falcon, East Falcon, and Thrower Park-based housing communities. West Biloxi Library is an easily accessible area for them, especially for those who recently moved to the area and into those communities. With the library's expansive accommodations in the computer labs, books, DVDs, and such, they're an asset to those who live and work around Keesler. As a rec. assistant, I see how and much of an impact this particular library has as it fulfills the needs in a community that we on base are unable to fully provide.
Thank you. Next person on my left. Come forward.
Also, this pen is dying.
It's out of ink?
All right, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Mandy Lawrence Hornsby. I'm the librarian over the local history and genealogy department located right down the road in the main Biloxi library. I just wanted to come on today and just talk about some of the things that we've done in the past year and some of the things that we're holding right now and working on in our department that's relevant and something we would like to keep going into the next fiscal year. First of all, we are a repository for not just Biloxi history, but Harrison County history and Gulf Coast history. We have some amazing things in our collection. We have items signed by George Orr. We have things like trumpets from Mr. Brunies, who started at Abby's Little Diner, which is now Burger Burger. We have received recently, in the past couple of years, three really impressive photography collections that are irreplaceable, and we have to start transcribing them from negatives and print images before they deteriorate. We also scanned over 14,000 items. We've launched a digital archive this year, Montage, which is available for free with no passcodes, no subscription or anything to citizens. And we've also just received a $48,000 National Endowment for Humanities grant called the Cultural and Community Resilience Grant, and this will allow us to start going into communities six we've marked, two in Biloxi, the Bayou Augusta community and the Pointe Cadet Vent Mays community, to allow us to collect oral history, scan documents from families, and educate them on how they can preserve their own community's history. We're here, we have patrons that ask us for all kinds of things, a lot of patrons that were here in Keesler or here back in the day in the 1960s, '70s, want to know if their house is still here after Katrina. We also have had patrons come from across the street and as far as England. So if you need anything, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me.
All right, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Sarah Chrislereski, and I don't want to take up too much time because I have a lot of folks explaining why they think the library's important, but I did want to address a couple of y'all's concerns that have come up that I'm more positioned to talk about. And one is the mention that the city has to spend a lot of money on maintaining the library building, West Biloxi in particular, and I feel like the city has to spend a lot of money to maintain all its buildings. The visitor center has had to have a new roof. When that happens, are you going to cut services because that has to occur? Or are the sports field's going to have fewer staff because you have to replace the turf? Are the senior centers, are they going to be penalized because they need a new carpet? And it is unfortunate that West Biloxi requires so much work, but the HVAC should have been replaced 10 years ago. It predates, you know, it's pre-Katrina. The public carpet is 15-plus years old, and it's a super heavily-used building. So I feel like that building maintenance is a cost of doing business that has to be done for all your buildings and not just ours. And whether or not you decide to close the building, if you close it, you're still going to have to have these maintenance costs. The building is not in any state to be used for anything. If you took us out, you would still have to replace the carpet, fix the ceiling tile, fix all the things that are wrong with it. It couldn't be used. And from my understanding, the build, the land was donated for a library, and the city would have to spend money to purchase the land if the library were no longer there and you wished to do something else with it. Additionally, same problem if you were to do a demolition of the building to try to use the land for something else, you would have to pay for the demolition and abatement of the materials that are in there and pay for purchasing the land. The final point that I haven't brought up previously is that if the cut that was proposed at the last meeting of cutting us back to $460,000 from where we are now will endanger our state funding. We get about $200,000 from the state that is shared throughout the system to supplement our salaries and personnel costs, and if we don't maintain local funding, if we fall below the threshold, they may take that money away, and that is a big concern for us because that's a big chunk of our budget as well. The last point that I want to say that's not related to the closing of the library, it's to the adequate funding, is about the staff salaries. I've heard, unfortunately, I've heard the comment, "Why should librarians make more than $10 an hour because they sit around and read all day?" And I'm sure any of my library staff, especially the West Biloxi staff, would really love to live in a fantasy world where that's what happens, and it isn't. My librarians are called on daily to be impromptu social workers. They sometimes have to manage things like people wielding machetes on the premises. They have to deal with medical emergencies, sometimes including overdoses. They have people who defecate by their staff door, by the air conditioning, in the floor of the bathroom, and many other unpleasant experiences such as this. They're also expected to do their library job, which includes and doesn't, this isn't, oh, sorry, but they do this for $10 an hour, and that's not right, and we need to change that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else on my left-hand side? All right, please come forward.
Hello. My name is Anissa Trevino, and I live at 15212 Ginger Cove in Gulfport, Mississippi. All right. I'm 26 years old, and I love my job. I've worked at the West Biloxi Library for two years now. I do all the requirements of my job and then some. I create the displays, I run a computer basics class, and I create posts for our social media. I'm what they call tech-savvy, so I help many people multiple times a day that have little to no knowledge of technology in any way I can. I grew up going to the tiny Gulfport Library that used to be behind the Sonic off of 49, and I still drive by it because I still live in my childhood home, and I'm reminded of how if I could have, I would have spent every second in that old, tiny library. I've met so many amazing members of this community, and I enjoy serving them, but I can't keep doing that if I can't afford to, like my fellow underpaid librarians. I'd like to quote our director and ask that this increase be approved so that our lowest-paid workers, including myself, can have a semi-livable wage. Libraries are crucial, a necessity even. It should be evident to you that our libraries matter to our patrons, and you wouldn't get emails pertaining to us at all if they didn't. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left? Your right. Anyone else on my left?
Hello, everyone. My name is Kelly Thompson. My address is 20763 Yankee Town Road in Socher. I am the branch manager of West Biloxi. I just wanted to read you all a statement I have. As the branch manager of the West Biloxi branch, I still have no words to express what I've been trying to process over the past week. I'm furious, I am sad, I am scared, not only for myself and my staff, not only for libraries everywhere, but for our patrons who rely on us daily. A lot of people look at libraries and they see books, but they are so much more than you can imagine. I have sat and helped a little girl whose father died and mother was in prison learn her alphabet and spell her name before she went to kindergarten. I've helped a kid immigrating from Poland get his naturalization papers so he could be with his family who immigrated previously. I have helped an addict get his things in order so he could get to rehab, so he could get the help that he needed. I've helped homeless get jobs, and I've had the joy of seeing them get themselves off the streets. I have sat with a 14-year-old boy who got kicked out of his house because he came out to his parents and gave him a safe place to be and a safe person to talk to. Not I, we. We librarians do what we do out of love. We do it because we want to see our communities and as members thrive. We do it because everyone deserves their best chance. It's not just about books, it's about the enrichment and betterment of those in our communities. It's about giving every person who walks through our doors a safe place to be where they see themselves represented. Libraries are the heart of the communities they serve. They are the face of the city. You can see the quality of the city reflected back in their libraries. I do urge the city council to take a step back and reflect on this proposal. If there is any care for the citizens of Biloxi, then closing a library branch and cutting funding is the last thing that should be proposed. Adequate funding should be provided so that we may continue to reflect the city in the light it deserves and take care of our patrons in the way they deserve.
Thank you. All right, anyone else on my left?
Good afternoon. My name's David Vincent. I live in Gulfport, Mississippi, but I worked for 40 years on the Bee's Road on the west side, on the east side, which is in Biloxi, at WMI, QID, and WOX. I'm on the Harrison County Library Board. Let me tell you a story about libraries and why they're so important. When I was in the third grade, I went to the first library in Madison County in Missouri. You see, we didn't have many books at home at all. We were poor. But I went, my grandmother lived just right around the corner from the library, so I was able to walk up there when we went to town. And I can remember the first book that ever checked out of the library. It was a book on Kit Carson, and that just opened up my eyes to the world. When you go into a library when you didn't have many books at home, and you would see just all these wonderful books that you could read and learn about the world. And that's the reason why I think we need to keep our libraries open and fund them adequately, because there's a lot of young boys and girls just like me that maybe don't have a lot of books at home, maybe they don't have a lot of transportation, maybe they can walk, maybe they can take the bus and go to a public library, and they can make their lives larger than they think they can, and maybe they can help education grow. Let me read you just a couple of things. I wasn't going to speak today, but I got moved to do it. Linda Laura Bush, First Lady of our country, said, "I have found the most valuable thing in my wallet is my library card." Walter Conkite said one time, "Whatever the cost of our libraries, the price is cheap compared to that of an ignorant nation." Andrew Carnegie said, "A library outranks any other thing in a community that they can do to benefit its people. It is a never-failing spring in the desert." So as you think about libraries in the future, I hope you think of them more than just a building. They're the community. That's where they gather. That's where they learn. That's where they learn how to read. That's how people come in and try to get a job. We serve a lot of people, from the rich, the poor, the black, the white, the Vietnamese, whatever race may be. It's an important part of our community, and I hope that you all will consider that as you make your vote in the coming days. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my left-hand side and your right-hand side? We'll now move to the right-hand side of the room.
I'm E.W. Suarez, and I live in Ward 3. I will not be stating my address. I would like to address some of the statements that were made over the past two weeks about Biloxi libraries. Biloxi has had libraries since 1898, and as Biloxi grew, so did the library system. And in the 1970s, Mayor O'Keefe decided to join Harrison County Library System to make the library bigger. To have people take a job that I take so seriously and can callously make a proposal to defund us, I don't just help the people in Biloxi, I help the people across the Gulf Coast, including veterans who need to read their medical records because they were exposed to Agent Orange at the CB Base. Guess where the only microfilm machines to view those records are? Biloxi Library at Local History. When was the last time any of you talked to an 84-year-old woman who was processing her trauma of having three stillborn children while she was stationed at Keesler? And the city doesn't have adequate records of the cemetery. So the cemetery record holder in this building gave them my name and my work number for me to handle. I don't appreciate somebody who is so short-sighted with the community's needs telling us that we are not important. We catalog every piece of history in this county. It is unconscionable.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Andrew Stutz. I live at 9417 Woodrow Place in Biloxi. I'm here to be a speak in support of the requested budget increase for the Harrison County Library Commission. In my view, Biloxi having four library branches is setting a great example for the rest of the coast. It shows that we strive to help provide our community with knowledge and services no matter where you live within our city. We should be doing everything we can to preserve access to as many members in the community as possible. I'm an engineer, and I believe that decisions like this should be data-driven. So I took a look at the publicly available data from fiscal year 2019 through 2023 for the police, fire department, and library commission non-departmental funding. I chose the police and fire department budgets to comparigence due to concerns expressed by council members for increasing library funding when cuts are being made to the PD and FD. Spending for the safety of our community is important without a doubt. However, I honestly feel that the numbers support the additional funding for the library. If you look at the increase in spending for each department for the four-year period from fiscal year 2019 to 2023, spending in the fire department, police department, and non-departmental library fund has increased by 51%, 29%, and 4% respectively. The library fund did its share for the city when spending had to be curtailed due to COVID from the fiscal year 2020 to 2021, getting decreased by 4.81%, while the fire department and police departments cut their spending by 5.43% and 4.7% respectively. The fire department and police budgets have recovered well and are well above their pre-pandemic levels. However, the library fund has barely increased in the same time period. Despite getting an equal percentage cut when spending had to be reined in, now the library fund is lagging. The $83,000 increase requested amounts to only 2.64% of the over $3 million in spending increases for the fire and police, excuse me, police departments from 2022 to 2023. To help put this in perspective, I believe my councilman, Mr. Barrett, mentioned that the police department needed new vehicles in the August 15th meeting. If we assume buying a new Chevy Tahoe, about $54,000 for the base model, and all of the equipment to outfit the vehicle, laptop, flights, radios, first aid equipment, et cetera, another $40,000, we get to about the cost request, a cost increase requested by the library fund. So if we're reducing the increased police budget by the cost of one new cruiser, the city could drastically improve the lives of 60% of the people working at the library, those that make under $12 an hour. The money would help ensure that the West Branch stays open, directly benefit the people working at the library- working at the library, and increase employee retention. A petition was started on August 23 in support of the West Biloxi Branch and has gathered over 1,000 signatures in less than a week. This demonstrates how important this resource is to the community. Please support our libraries and the budget increase. I'm happy to share the spreadsheet that I created and the data that I pulled from if you would like to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone? Anyone else? Anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my right?
My name is Matt Zandy. I live at 770 Sharon Hills Drive in Biloxi. I vote in Ward Four. My interest in the library is solely as a patron. I've got a current copy of the Bee News Monthly, which is an excellent publication. In there on page six, it states that the air conditioning replacement has been done at the Biloxi Building. They're now working on the ceiling tiles and carpet. That's true. It doesn't make much sense to me to close down a building that we're spending money to upgrade. Also in the Bee News on page six, I read an article of upgrades on Holloway Sports Center, millions of dollars worth. I'm glad to see city interest in amenities for our community, and I believe libraries should remain part of that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my right? Come forward.
My name is Arlo Hill. I live at 263 Eisenhower Drive in Biloxi. I am the Youth Services Librarian at the Biloxi Central Branch, and I am a member of the LGBTQ community, which is one of the communities we serve at our libraries, along with the homeless, the disabled, people of all different races. I want to talk about, the library is a safe space for everyone. That includes you, includes your grandchildren, your children, your cousins, aunts, uncles, whoever wants to come. We let them come in. It's a safe space for everyone, and everyone deserves to have that safe space, whether it's in West Biloxi or somewhere else. And I know that by stating I am a member of the LGBTQ community, I'm putting a target on my back, but I'm willing to do that for the people who can't speak up for themselves or too scared to. And the last thing I want to say is with a quote, because I am a librarian and I read books sometimes, when I have the time, when I'm not working, is that we are bound to others through past and future, and with every crime and every kindness, we build that future. And I know what kind of future I'm building, but I want you to think about what kind of future that you will be building with your decisions. The pen will work?
It's the second one.
My address is slightly invisible, but that's okay.
All right, I saw one more hand on the right-hand side. Yeah, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Heidi Hoy. I live at 1611 Glenn Swetman Street. I'm here today to talk in favor of the Back Bay Mission. Thank you. Because there is no resources for the homeless, they provide or trying to provide low-income housing for people. They need funding for this, as you know. They have a lot of volunteers that come in to build these homes for these people, and I just think it's very important that we keep, keep up this, this quest. Back Bay Mission does so many different things for so many people. I think a lot of people don't even realize, I didn't realize until I started volunteering there myself, that there is no shelter for a homeless person here in Biloxi. So can we build more income housing that they can transition into the, into housing? There is a lot of things that they do to help people that are displaced, to help people that are food insecure, to give people a place just to cool off during the day. They have to leave at night. I just think we need to continue this funding for Back Bay Mission, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else on my right? Anyone else? All right, either one of you can come forward.
Hello, I'm Abby Trujillo. I live at 12024 Schooner Cove in Biloxi. This is the first City Hall meeting I have ever been to in my life, and I am 29 years old. I don't have anything specific to say except for, um, sorry. The beautiful work that libraries do is an emotional thing, and I am an emotional person. But I just wanted to say, I was not born and raised here, but Biloxi has been my home for the last two years. And if, I know we have so many military members here, so a lot of people can understand how jarring it can be to move across the country or to a different country and try to create a home and a community. When I first moved here, that was a very daunting task, but one of the first places that felt like home, with the beautiful Biloxi Southern Hospitality as well, was the West Biloxi Library. I have a daughter, and we went to Storytime all the time, loved the children's librarian, and I still go to the library every single week, especially with my child. I just wanted to cast in my word as well, put in my two cents of the importance of libraries in particular, but especially this library, and what a wonderful home away from home it is for so many people, as you've heard many, many times. One of the most comforting things, especially knowing that we have so many military members here and so many people that are making Biloxi their new home, is that one of the most beautiful things about libraries is that you can find one everywhere. So a wonderful library with helpful, kind faces, especially in working functional order, is one of the most home-like things you can experience anywhere you go. And I would just like to pass that along for today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I saw one more hand go up.
My name is John Gutierrez. I live at 520 Beach Boulevard in Biloxi. I'm a Biloxi native, but I have a master's degree in library studies from the University of California. It's important to keep in mind that the issue here is not just about the library, it's about West Biloxi as a part of town. There are two libraries north of the bay and one east of Keesler. If you want, if you close the West Biloxi Branch, a very large populated area of Biloxi is left without library services. What kind of message would closing the library send to property owners and potential investors in West Biloxi? That the city is abandoning the neighborhood, cutting services, reducing the quality of life, letting that part of town get run down? Let's be clear, studies repeatedly show that the presence of a library has a significant economic impact on surrounding neighborhoods. When given a choice, people prefer to live near a public library and recognize the presence of a library as enhancing their quality of life. Libraries are known to increase property values in the neighborhoods where they're located. A study conducted by the University of Pennsylvania found that homes in Philadelphia neighborhoods with a library were worth thousands of dollars more on average than those in neighborhoods without a library. The study also concluded that the additional home values generated by proximity to a library produced millions of dollars in additional property taxes to the city each year. That study indicates that closing the West Biloxi Branch is likely to result in lower property values in that part of town and a significant loss of property taxes to the city. Proximity to a library also increases spending at businesses located near the library. A study in Minnesota found that users who stop at the library while running errands are likely to spend money at firms and shops in the same neighborhood as the library. The current operating budget of the Biloxi Libraries is almost 50% below the national average of public library spending per capita, not 10% or 25% below average, but 50% below. Now, I know Biloxi can't fund its libraries at the rates big cities do, but I believe it can do better than 50% below average. Biloxi is giving its libraries less than it did 20 years ago. It probably won't surprise anyone in this room to hear that Mississippi is at the bottom of the list when it comes to funding public libraries. As Mississippians, we're no strangers to being at the bottom of a list. We hear it all the time. But I've always thought that Biloxians aren't content to stay at the bottom. We want to raise ourselves up any way we can. We want better for Biloxi. If the council makes further cuts to funding for Biloxi libraries, and especially if it closes the West Biloxi Branch, that's a step back, not a step up. So I respectfully ask the council to not only keep the West Biloxi Branch open, but also to fully fund the Biloxi Libraries in the amount requested.
Thank you, and we have time for one more person. If you'll come forward and sign in and state your name.
My name is Jeff Rosenberg. I live at 1164 Lafayette Street. Personally and professionally, as a patron, I rely on the services provided by the libraries here in Biloxi. Our town would be done in irreversible disservice if it does not support the library. Thank you.
All right. All right, we probably have time for one more, since he was... George, take notes.
That was a quick one, right?
Yeah, take notes from him. Anyone else in the room like to speak? We have time for one more person. All right, there's no one else. Citizens' comments are closed. Thank you all for being here today. We'll now move to our policy agenda, and what we'll do is, we have, we have a budget in front of us that hopefully everyone has reviewed and made notes of what their recommendations are. So what we'll do, we'll start to my left with Mr. Lawrence. You give us your recommendations, and if, if you have a recommendation to increase or decrease something, we will ask each, we can't vote on it, but we can ask each individual person if they're in favor or opposed to that, and we'll go down the, the row and do that with each person. So we'll start with you, if you'll give us a list of what you, any recommendations or changes that you have to the budget.
The first I need to find out from, is a fofo Diane. When y'all get, just give us this sheet here. This is a brand-new one, and I noticed you're on health insurance, you went up to 17 million. All right, we sat and met with Cy last week, Paul and Kenny and I, and we can get like 11.5, 11.6.
That fund is not only health insurance, that includes our general liability and workers' comp as well as health insurance.
How much is for the health insurance? I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
How much in there is for the health insurance? Is that 11?
It's at 10.9.
10.9? Okay.
Because he told us about 10.1, that's what he recommended, 10.1, 10.123. So I don't know, we got 10.9.
Well, the bottom level is 10 point... No, 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 no. To be fully funded, I think, is 11.1, correct?
Well, we looked at funding with 10.1.
To be fully funded is 11.1, and to be at bare minimum is 9.6. And my number settled at 10.9. I'm sorry, 10.09. Almost 10.1.
Yes. That's what we, that's what we actually looked at.
So 10.09?
But, uh, what gets me is this $7 million increase. I mean, that couldn't have just happened this year. So that wasn't in there before? There's no way that was...
It's not all health insurance.
Right.
That is all of our insurance is in one fund.
Right. What I'm saying, you went up from even a 14, you went up 3 million the other day. And all of a sudden, all this sitting in the health insurance or in the total insurance, where it had to be there before. Last year wasn't, I mean, it was always, it's like 11.12. So you're talking about 6 million increase.
No, 8.7 was last year, and went to, well, it's 10.097.
Yeah, but that's just health. Last year was 14 and some change, and this year it's at 17.
That's what I'm saying, so why did it go up even like last year?
Part of it is our property insurance increase.
And you said you have all this, well, it had to be in there before. That's what I'm saying, it couldn't have went up that much in one year.
It did.
Well, it went up so much. One year, it went from sitting at 12 million forever, now it's sitting at 17 million. I know you said it went up, but...
Correct, correct. Correct. But that's bare minimum, this is if you're fully insured, and we have all these lasers this year. Right, but we have 860,000 in lasers that we are responsible for.
Okay. Okay.
Right, and I have that number. Right, but...
17.09.
Right here is what I'm planning for our expense and the employee portion to come in, and then these are all of our expenses.
I just wanted, I just want to make sure it's...
I use size information exactly. 9.5 and 11.1.
All right, George?
Yeah, I was just saying, so I'm just trying to get in my head how we jumped up that much just in the last couple of years. This stuff had to be in there. This group has been on insurance committee forever. I see the health insurance price at 10 million, but then I don't understand why the last couple of years you up that much more money, because you said you added other things to it. That just couldn't have happened in the last two years. We had about the same amount of employees and the same amount of problem, so that I can't see the increase being that much from 14 million to 17 million since last week.
But it's not only health insurance, it's also property and workers' comp.
Right, and it's been like that forever, so there's no way it jumped up 3 million dollars over two years span. What changed so much in two years that you added 3 million dollars to it? What, what's the increase come from?
We...
Property insurance went up a million, and then there's 1.44 on the health insurance, that's 2.4 right there.
Property insurance went up more than a million.
More than that, yeah. Property insurance went up more than a million.
Yeah, but it doesn't have nothing to do with property insurance, right?
Yes, it does. It's every insurance.
Yeah, well, the insurance was separated, you put that in the administration account. So you put it back in here? So you moved a 3, so you moved a 3.1 million to this?
We're ensuring, it's costing more to insure that.
We are self-insured, and 17 million dollars is in a self-insurance fund. That fund balances to zero when it's said and done, and it's funded by the general fund, the water sewer, and the port. So the 3.1 that is in the general fund is its contribution to the SURF fund for our property insurance.
I don't know, that's, that's plenty strange, be up that much, that's just...
Do you have, do you have any?
Yeah, we got plenty of stuff here.
Recommend, okay.
Hey, relax. We come here to do the budget. We got questions to ask. I noticed we changed a lot of these numbers. I don't know what y'all did on this sheet. This is, we, negative 12 million, right here. And no matter what we done with all these other numbers, we still out 12 million dollars. So how come none of that changed?
The big sheet last year, the, that you reviewed, at the bottom line, we were going to wind up with 3. something million. This, this year, you're going to wind up 1.48 million, and that was directly attributable to the increase in the insurance, the 1.3 million.
Medical insurance.
Medical insurance and all insurance.
All right.
So all that, but this balance never changed, that's what I'm saying. You just added 3 million insurance, and this is balance still 12.1, I guess, I mean...
No, 1.6 million. To that, we went from a total of 79 million to 81 million. You're looking at the all expenses. That's what the change was, and it was due to the increase in the insurance. That's what the change was, and it was due to the increase in the insurance.
All right, I see it. And this, a non-departmental, all these numbers seem to have changed, but the totals though didn't change.
Say it again.
So I mean, they had, like one, we had so many hundred thousand, we got 5,000 in it. So that's all related to the insurance, too? So we should have an insurance meeting somewhere, obviously, Paul.
What line are you talking about? What word wrote? 25 on... In column seven?
Well, I mean, the community development was 267, that's 5,000.
Right, it's community development and expenses.
That'd be line 27 on this sheet. I'd guess they're all the same.
5.356. The last we're getting went to...
Advertising. He's looking at community development advertising. Line 27 on your combined fund statement, the big sheet.
He's talking about line...
He's looking at line 27, 01822, item number.
Right, it was...
Under non-departmental...
Right.
On the... On this big sheet here, that he's looking at line 27. He's talking about the $5,000. I guess on line one, I guess there's an increase of 5,000 is what he's asking what that is, in the advertising for community development.
He had 267 proposed, 267,000. You put 5,000 in, now it's 272. What was the 267 in advertising for community development? And this is one of the latest sheets you give us. So I was just trying to figure out how we did that, because on the other one, it was 264 where the 5,000 was, on the one before that.
And total, correct.
See, before y'all had that low number, but it was 245. Now you got different numbers, but it's 272.
I would give you that breakdown. I can't tell it.
267 and 272 is what you're talking about.
Yeah.
She said she don't know the breakdown, but she'll get that to you.
From the 23 budget, went from 5 to 267.
All right, so... And this one, you increased the court 50,000.
Yeah.
From what it was, we've never collected 500,000. We collected... Now you moved it to 550.
Yeah.
Yeah, we collected 370,000 last year.
Do you want to know why?
Yeah, I just...
If we estimated, because of the recent movements we had with regarding to putting people in jail that are frequent flyers, we... In one month, we increased fines by 20,000. So in an effort, in 2016, our fines collector was 1.3 million dollars.
Right.
Okay? You remember when we had a couple of ACLU courts that really went down to nothing? And then when we were stressed by jail restrictions, we turned that around. We've actually had more allocated for jail space, and people are understanding. You can't just do this and ignore fines. So I think the total estimate for this year's collections would be 550. Is that what we said? 550,000?
No.
That's very conservative. It might be more than that.
I hope it is.
Yeah, I hope it is.
Because we're always in trouble with that department losing money, because like you said...
We ain't losing money.
You're not making... You're not collecting that money to upset the people.
No, most of that figure you're talking about is just legal services. It costs, you know, again, there's an opportunity to regain some revenue in fines because of what we've been able to do with the sheriff's department and the county, and of course, the court system, too. So again, we're, you know, we've been frustrated about, you know, people ignoring, I guess, judgments. That's not going to happen. And I think this increase in what we feel the fines will be is reflective of what I think reality is going to be this year.
Yeah, I'm like you, hoping it works. I mean, anything that helps, because like you said, you're just collecting less money. Nobody was paying the fines, is what they were doing.
And again, I tried to explain that, and I think we've come a ways with regarding with the sheriff and the jail and the ability to make people respect those judgments.
And then on the top of this line...
Wait a minute.
It must be...
We didn't put it in.
...line one, you have a column would be 5, I think. You have $10 million you started with, and then you moved the 10 million from here to contracts. So where does 10 million come from? Is that 10 million cash?
That 10 million is the ARPA money we received from COVID. We got 5.5 million two years in a row. That totaled 11.1, and we've allocated it to various capital projects. So the money's moving from the ARPA bank account to the capital projects funds that are going to be supported by that.
That was money refunded from COVID? Okay, then, is it... That's where you're supposed to put it, in the contract?
Yeah.
That was in the general fund?
That's where we're using.
So you took it out the general fund and moved...
And putting it in the general fund.
And what contract did you put in, or just any of them?
Yeah, we funded a bunch of contracts from that.
That's another $10 million. I was just trying to figure out what we doing with it, but you moved it over here, so I was trying to figure out what project you moved it to. That's all.
Yeah, we got 40 projects going, don't we?
40 easy projects.
40 easy projects, and that's all part of the funding, and we've got... We can give you a complete where we are with each one of those projects.
And then in the port, you have 2.3 million. I guess, is that from the county? Because on the bottom, you've got a bond money from the port, 2.12. Where does this bond... Where does this bond come from?
The 2.3 is our 1% from the county.
Right. And down on the bottom, you've got a bond listed here. Where's this bond? When we do a bond with the port? Is that money that it was?
That bond was done in 2017, and the county also contributes to the payment of that. The 1 mil goes towards that payment as well. It's in a whole separate fund.
That's the 50,000 a year. And that would be roughly about 50,000. You pay on that per year.
We cleared up some previous bonds, and then we finished the rest of it when we got that 1 mil equivalent three years ago.
Yeah, it's from 17.
17, yeah. That's service. Rest of the mileage goes in budgets.
Related to the port, yeah. I need too many sheets of paper here. All right. So the 17 million that we put into the... All the insurance affects our bottom line, any? We went from 14 to 2.75 more. How's that affect our bottom line?
Well, you know, if we spend all of that, again, the bottom line, we anticipated before you made this arrangement, was going to be wind up, we're going from 9 to 3. Now it's going to go from 9 to 1.4, 1.5. That's the bottom line.
Okay.
If we spend all of that that we had budgeted, but you know, we don't... We never do that. That's why we're anticipating a little bit more dedication, because you know, we... Actuals, revenue versus expense, you know, we're favorable pretty much every year. So this is a guess, and if we guess, and this is 100% accurate, we'll wind up with 1.5 million in the general fund.
Additional, million and a half.
Million and a half, yeah.
So that's how you got the top number, the 9,000, the 9,600?
9 million is what we anticipate in October 1, where we will be. Actually, the gain, the difference between revenues and expenses reflected in the cash we've collected, and that's the cash we hopefully will collect it.
I just want to go... We had 6.85. Now you says 9.6.
That's it.
Right. And I noticed the other thing in the court, they set the value of the court was 867, 869, but then they got... You added 237,000 for inflation. I noticed that you did that with anybody else's. So the thing went to 11.05, 1.105. So somehow or another, there's 237,497 in inflation. And that's what they sent us in the paperwork. So I'm trying to figure, why did we do inflation in the court system?
I'm not sure. I mean, where are you... Where are you talking about? What piece of paper are you on, George?
This is the stuff that they sent us from David and Peter Abay.
Yeah, well, Peter's here, too.
And this was the numbers. I was just wondering why so much inflation only in the court system?
Not inflation? I don't know what you're talking about. It's all revenue.
It had a line, inflation, and the numbers went to 11.05, 1.105 million. That's where I got it from. It's the number y'all sent us.
Peter's here, but I'm not sure what that term came from.
That's what you sent me, Peter. Yeah. Yeah, that one, you just sent on the phone to me, the court, the port, and that's what it was. And then on the bottom, it said inflation, 11, and it's 237,000 added.
I'll check on that, but I don't think inflation's...
Well, that's what the word was on the... I'm sorry.
I'll check on that.
All right.
But let me say again, you know, we're at about 400,000 right at this very second. We feel like, you know, being conservative, we will book, you know, 550,000 in court fines. You know, it could be, hopefully, it'll be more than that, but that's a conservative number, and...
I understand that part. I can see that. But that's... I'm like you, that's the best thing in the world to do, where you can collect bond, you know, make sure you get paid. Like you said, we went through three or four years.
Through third-party stuff, yeah.
All right, we actually had to move the million out of the property insurance and put it back in the general fund.
We didn't do that in this budget. We left it at 4.
I was requesting that, too, because I was trying to get the bottom line to look better. So we have to ask everybody if they want to do that or not. This is the property insurance with 3.1 million. I've said to use the 3.1 million we had before.
That is the 4.03.
Right, and take out roughly a million dollars and put it back into the general fund. It really don't affect anything until you have to buy insurance again, so...
So are you saying, was... Is that something that you...
Let me see if I can understand. You had asked before to go and put the budget at 3.1 million.
Right.
All right, but we had estimated it's going to be 4.03 million.
Right.
Okay, we left the 4.03 million because I thought the bottom line looked better. You know, as I said, at crunch time, councilman... Crunch time, you know, the million could be, if it did in fact does cost us 4.03 million, we have to bear a budget amendment to that when, in April or March, when the real numbers come out. So we just reflected that, and again, if you reduce that amount of insurance budget to 3.1, it's going to reduce, you know, about a million dollars and add that to the bottom, you know, anticipated cash.
If you want to make that recommendation, you can make that, and then we'll ask and see who wants to go along with it.
Right, that's what I said, y'all want to...
So you want to make it to 3.1 million?
That's what it was, 3.1. Keep it 3.1, and take the extra million and put it back in the general fund.
The general fund.
If it's possible you need it, you have to see what happens in March.
Okay. So I'm supposed to ask this individually, or can we just all raise our hands if we're for...
Yeah, I would think, yeah, we'll do what you...
This isn't an actual vote. This is just seeing what...
So that's just strictly for this.
Okay. So who's in favor of doing what George is saying, changing the property insurance from 4.035, 4.05 to 3.1?
Which was the original one, 3.1 million.
And the reason we want to do this is because we can shop it and not just relying on one quote from one source.
You could leave that 4.0 alone and still shop it, but just the actual be what it is. It is what it is. I mean, this is truly a budgetary, you know, bigger...
How about we do a half million? How you feel about that, councilman? I'm just asking.
Whatever you save, you're saving money. They're going back to the general fund. It's not going anywhere.
A half a million? A half a million, we'll split the difference with a half million.
So we're going to reduce it by a half a million?
That's correct.
3.6.
Four... Whatever the 4.0 line...
So take just whatever the difference is.
Reduce the budgeted figure by 400,000.
But we still have to see if we have a consensus on that.
Sure.
So who's in favor of doing that? Individually, okay, Ms. Newman, are you in favor or opposed? Ms. Newman's against. Okay. Mr. Deming?
First, the function of the money is what's important, right? If we budget the 4.05, then the administration has the authority to spend it in whichever way they want. Whereas if we reduce that budget, then they would be compelled to come to us to change the budget, in which we could require that they have shopped it around. And so the only function I could see would be the compulsion of the administration to do whatever we're requesting them to do to get to the bottom line. If the majority of the council supports that, I'll support that. I don't think it's necessary. I think they're going to get the best rate we can possibly get for insurance regardless, but I'll support the council's will.
Yeah, I don't mind splitting the difference, half a million. You know, what I hadn't heard this year, but I've always heard in previous years, is this is just a document. These are just numbers.
It's just a figure.
They're estimates, our best estimates at the time. But that being the case, yeah, I'll go along with what Mr. Glavine recommends, just split the difference, and if you need more than that, you come back to the council for, well, a budget amendment. We'll do that at the time we need to spend those funds.
That's right. We could reduce it to zero and then come back with a budget amendment. I mean, we're going to do the best we can. I mean, it's just a figure.
I don't want to give anybody at that table a heart attack. Okay?
All right, we're going to reduce...
Yeah. I'm just going to reiterate, again, I think we've used one source, and I think if we shop it, two or three or four sources, perhaps somebody is hungrier, and we may find that half million.
If other brokers start to shop it, we will have to change the broker on file. The broker is the individual that shops for the insurance. So if you are not happy with our broker, then you need to make a change in the broker to shop for insurance.
So, but if it was coming up for renewal, like it did last year, and we got caught at the 12th hour, 11th hour, what's to say we couldn't contact more than one broker to ask them to give us a quote?
Because you would have to have a different broker on file and fill out a piece of paper to give them that authority.
That's not hard to do, just list another name.
I think there are some out there that would say, hey, we'll provide you a quote, whether I'm your broker of record or not. Would they not do that?
We can figure out the legalities of that at this point. So right now, we're trying to determine if we're going with Mr. Lawrence's recommendation. Ms. Newman's no, Mr. Deming is yes, Mr. Tisdale's yes.
Yes.
I'm, I'm a no, but that's four too, so we will make that resume, recommendation.
Reduce that budget figure by half a million.
By, by splitting the difference in the middle, whatever that comes...
500.
Yeah. Okay. Any other recommendations, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, we're going to, on a cruise in the coast, Woody Bailey, this is 25 million in the impact for the city, requested 30,000, so I'd like to move that to 30,000. It was 25,000.
So they, they requested 30, you're recommending, and, and we have 25 in the budget? Okay, Ms. Newman? Ms. Newman, are you for, are you for this recommendation or not? Us? What's that?
I didn't catch the entire recommendation.
Okay, so we've given Cruise in the Coast in the past $20,000 a couple of years ago, that changed to 25. They requested 30,000 this year. We have 25 in the budget. He's requesting that it go up to 30.
What are you requesting?
Okay, Ms. Newman's a yes. Um, you're a no? Leave it at 25?
I'm at 25.
Okay.
What's Deming at?
No, he's a, he's a 25.
You're at what?
25.
25. I got a hard time with this one. I'm in the tourism industry, and I, and I know what the impact is of Cruise in the Coast. However, you know, we're, we're, we got this budget to be fiscal responsible for, and we're asking others to do the same thing. And despite my affection for this, this event, I got to do what's fiscal right and just keep it at 25.
Okay, so there's not enough support for that, so we leave it at 25,000. All right, next recommendation.
The one is Christmas on the water. Last year we gave them 3,500, and I requested the 3,500 again, and they wrote a formal letter, brought it up to the administration. That's the Christmas Day, the water on the Christmas, Christmas and the children's parade. It's all in the same thing. And they, we did that last year, self-support to them.
The Christmas on the water and children's parade is all together?
It's all tied in together with the fireworks.
Did we give them 3,500 last year?
3,500.
Okay.
That was the first year. That was the first year for that.
Where, where was it done if it wasn't done in non-departmental?
It was done out of sponsorships in the administration, out of the mayor's office.
Okay, so you're wanting to increase the 1,500 to 3,500?
Yeah.
Ms. Newman?
No, that's what he requested, 3,500. They, that was moved down by somebody, I don't know who did the 1,500. The letter was 3,500.
Now, let me, who, who was in charge of Christmas on the water?
That's, uh, through Rusty David, that crew that does that, the fireworks.
So that's through the seafood museum?
It's a Friday and Saturday.
Through the seafood museum?
No, no, nothing to do with seafood museum. Nothing to do with them at all.
Okay.
This is strictly the children's parade, which is Friday night, and then, uh, Christmas on the water with the fireworks and others.
So, so this funding also includes the Christmas, that, that's not coming out of Parks and Recreation's budget? Okay. All right, Ms. Newman, are you in favor or opposed to...
This is strictly, this has nothing to do with parks, anybody else, this is strictly done for the kids, they done that.
So you're a yes, you're a yes?
Well, this was paid out of the sponsorships from the executive department's budget. If we're moving it over to non-departmentals, are we adjusting where it came from?
It's not in any other department, that's what's non-departmental.
Was that adjusted out of the executive budget?
It's already shifted to non-departmental.
Okay. All right, so you're, all right, Mr. Tisdale?
I'd be for the increase if the difference in this case, what is it, 2,000, would come out of the, the mayor's bottom line, his new budget.
You need to ask the mayor.
I don't have to ask the mayor, all I need is four votes when we vote on it. But, but, but my point is, I didn't realize that we, we, that we funded this last year because it, it came out of the executive budget, not out of non-departmental. It's probably more appropriate here, non-departmental. If we're going to fully fund you, I think, fully fund it, I think we ought to move that a full 3,500 out of your budget. That's my thinking. A little bit different than everybody else.
So we need to...
It was moved out, the 3,500 was moved out of the budget in, in this situation. Then 3,500, if you, it's 1,500 right now. If you want to kick it up to 35, it's going to be not, not all of it's non-departmental.
Additional 2,000 moved out instead of the... So you're saying 1,500 was moved out of your budget to move it over here?
Mm-hmm. Where is this additional 2,000 coming from?
Non-departmental. We weren't given an additional 2,000. That, that, everything that was shifted was pulled out of the administration sponsorship budget.
This is like who's on first. Last year...
It's not, it's not in anywhere.
Correctly ramrooked, here's what I'm thinking, last year came out of your budget, 3,500, boom, gone. This year, we're moving it out of your budget into non-departmentals. But at this point, and that 3,500, which means your budget would, all things being equal, be reduced by $3,500 compared to last year, correct?
That's right.
But your budget, I think, in looking at it, has increased...
It didn't go up.
By 100,000. Diana, what's the executive budget gone up on the latest?
Sponsorship items, what you're talking about.
Yeah, the executive, the total from last year to this year.
It's mainly gone up because of B News.
Because of B News?
B News.
Okay.
But the sponsorship portion, I'm sure you have a subcategory and account for sponsorships, right? And you've removed 1,500 out of that, and we plugged it in non-departmentals. If we increase it to two, to 3,500, will 2,000 more come out of the sponsorship package?
No.
Why not?
Because we moved all of that, we weren't going to fund it at 3,500. We reduced it.
It would come out of the general fund, huh?
It would come out of the general fund, right, but if you spent in, in the sponsorship, would you not sponsor it this year?
Right, we just moved it, we put it back.
My question is...
Based on the request, we put it in departmental and not in the sponsorship.
If we funded it, the 1,500, but they need 35, would you use it, would you sponsor it again, the other 2,000?
No. These have been done, done, non-departmental.
Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Tisdale?
Well, non-departmental is general fund, so I mean, you're cutting some, uh...
Right, we sponsored it last year, the bottom line is, we, I think the intent is...
The city sponsored it last year, but...
Right, the intent is that we would do it, the only thing is, this additional 2 grand is not coming out of your budget, we only move 1,500 over instead of 3,500.
That's right.
Okay?
That's right.
And then that additional 2,000, since it's now non-departmental, it's going to come out of general fund.
It's all general fund.
It's the balance, right?
It's all general fund.
Okay, so we just added 2,000 to the budget?
There you go.
Hey, all right. I'd hope to take it out of your budget, but...
I don't have any budget for that.
So there's no, there's four supporting, so make that adjust.
Make it 3,500.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, the next one is, uh, they have the library, other expenses, the 25,000. Is that supposed to be for...
Maintenance.
That's the air conditioner.
Yeah, we have. The 167,000.
Operations and maintenance.
Is that carpet, I thought the air conditioning was already done?
Okay.
Is the air conditioning done?
No. Now, has that, that's already been paid out of this fiscal year?
Yeah, it's in this fiscal.
23. So the additional 9,000 is just an increase in maintenance? And is that something we're putting in or something that they're requesting?
The 16,000 that's in 23's budget was to remove the carpet squares. We did a budget amendment to put it here. Currently, all of libraries' expenses are in public works. We created this account to have it separate so that when someone asks, how much does it cost to operate the libraries, we have a separate line item and it's not mixed in with normal city expenses. We started the year off with 25. Throughout the year, there could be further amendments for additional funds for expenses that are needed.
Okay, all right, got it.
Thank, thank you, Diana, for explaining that. Thank you.
Well, my question, how much money we have spent so far? Have we spent 160,000 already working on this building? Or is that all the buildings? Kind of know we had 167,000.
The air conditioner unit's about 135. Everything else that we spent, I can't answer that because it goes through public works. And I don't know what the individual jobs are that are coded in that area.
So...
And that's why we created this account, to help us to be able to clearly see what we spend on the libraries.
So the air conditioner that we just replaced on West Biloxi Library is $135,000?
Close to it, yes.
Okay.
It has been replaced, the air conditioner, and is the floor complete? Because they had the problem with that asbestos.
No, the asbestos wasn't as big a problem as we thought. Asbestos problem with the tile.
Asbestos is less than $5,000.
Say again?
It's a, asbestos remediation will take place in, in September and be billed to this year. It's right at $5,000, and it's a very small patch of asbestos that we have to deal with.
I wouldn't want the roof, I said, they're supposed to be replacing the roof.
Replaced.
On the West Biloxi Library, replacing the roof also. So is that 20,000, 25,000 for that?
We're in the process of, of replacing the carpet in the, in the West Biloxi Library. The, the purchase, purchase order has already been issued to remove the carpet, and we're about to submit a purchase order to replace the new carpet, but time-wise, it may have to go in the new fiscal year. And that's about, I think that's 59,000.
So between the, the new carpet and the, the, um, air conditioner, we're talking at around, around $200,000-ish investment?
It's a good number.
Okay. So 195,000, okay.
That's not something we're going to do every year.
Yeah, I understand, I was just...
Carpet's pretty old.
And then, so the 25,000 is basically what we budget for now, it was just in different places. We've just moved in that. Okay. So...
Like, like she said, but that is, now you have a list of where you spend all this money. And that would need to be listed in here. Not on the public works. I need to build, that shouldn't be a, I don't understand why they're on the public works anyway. You have a library system. It should be listed in that. And that's what our job is, to maintain them and fix all the buildings, you know? So you have to know what you're spending, you know, satisfy everybody.
Done the same thing in the museums. In each of the museums, we've established separate accounts so that we can track how much we're, we're spending on all these various...
Like, you've got, you've got maintenance contracts that have been there forever on all the museums. That's, that's sitting right there, what you're spending. This is, this is brand new with the library. But I'm just saying, these are, the seafood museum, okay, there it is, right there, maintenance contract. And how much money are you funding, right there? So they've been there, that's nothing new. So it's the new for the library, I mean, I'm just, you know, got to make sure we got all this straight. All right, so you just want to leave that in, then that's fine, so you can, next year that, the number's going to be a lot more because of the money you spend on it, or you're going to budget what for maintenance for the library, to make sure we take care of all the buildings?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, would you go down? Let's go to the next one.
Wait, are we still on library, or are you...
Well, no, they said they wanted to keep that in, the list of expenses.
I'd like to make, I just want to make some general comments since we're...
We'll go right ahead.
Since we're talking about the library and we got a lot, a lot of people in the audience. You know, we're fortunate to have four libraries. That's what we're talking about here in Biloxi. You know, we don't have one, we don't have two, we don't have three, we have four library systems, you know, and I understand how you look at these numbers sometimes, where you see how we're looking at them up here, and we're trying to understand how are we allocating taxpayer's dollars to what and how much. We just heard over and above the ask, you know, there was nearly, over the last year, 200,000 spent on one library, you know, for capital improvements. That doesn't count the insurance costs that have increased on all of our buildings and the four libraries that we contribute to. We pay insurance, do we not? The county, does the county pay any on the insurance?
They own the building.
I understand, that's why I'm just clarifying to everybody here that we pay, and I, I don't know what that cost is, if we put that to the side, and the increase, everybody knows that if, if you own a home or, or whatever the cost of, you know, insurance that's been increasing, it's no different on the property insurance. The utilities, I, I don't know if we clarified that, who pays the utilities?
Biloxi does.
The library, and you pay it from the funds that we give, that we, the county and the city and other sources give you. And I just want to say this, look, we're, and, and I'm, and just pardon me for another second, I, I got a post today from my nephew, and, and, you know, talking about Katrina. And he was 13 years old at the time, this is 18 years ago. And he said, Uncle Kenny, I just want to let you know, during Katrina, you picked me up and we were riding around trying to get to my house, and we finally got to, to my house, and there was nothing left, and I broke down and cried, and you scooped me up, that was his words, you scooped me up, and you looked at me and, and said, look, it's going to be all right, our family is stronger than any storm. And I just want to say, I feel the same way with everything that we're responsible for in the city and the hard work that you do and everybody else, but, and we'll be stronger than any, any storm with this, but we got to be, or, or the, we don't control the library staffing, we, we do in the city departments, and we control and budget for that. The library system controls their staffing guidelines and the number of days that they're are, are open or closed, and you got to look at that, that business model and know the money that you have to work with, and you got to try to operate accordingly. And if we have more money, God knows, we're generous enough and we'll try our best to make all departments better. We got 84-plus vacancies in our different departments right now with the city of Biloxi that we had, we couldn't put in this budget. We need to put it in this budget to serve our community, in police, in fire, in public works, and, and, and other departments, but we only have so much funding, even with the increases, because with those increases, our insurance costs have went up and our other costs have went up to run this city. And, you know, we hope we can continue to improve and support you, the library team, and all of our departments. So, you know, as we look through this and try to determine, I just want to let you know, it's not necessarily cutting, you know, there was $200,000 if you would have had to pay for that air conditioner or the carpet or something to run that business, to operate that library, you would have had to have found that source or you couldn't have made those improvements. So I hope we can find a way to continue to have four libraries. Hey, it sounds like we need one in every ward, we need seven libraries, but we just don't have the means to do that. And with that, I'll get off of the podium and let somebody else speak.
All right, I'll get on the podium unless you want to get up there.
Let's, let's let George finish his, what, his list of items, and then we'll move down, and everyone will have a chance to speak. Okay, do you have anything else you would like to recommend?
Yeah, crime stoppers, they requested 3,000, and they cut it to 1,500. So I'd like to move it back to 3,000. I talked to chief, he said they do good, a good job, so why you cut it, I really don't know. You know what you're going to do, if we're going to do this to these people, don't even accept their letters. If you don't want them, fine, just tell them right at the back, you don't want them. Don't send it to others and cut it in half, then we got to turn around, if it was $1,500. We're talking about a $100 million budget here, we're dealing with $1,500. So I mean, for what reason?
We have a recommendation, let's go down.
Move it back to 3,000.
Ms. Newman? Okay, Mr. Deming? Mr. Tisdale?
We're good.
Okay, so we have enough, move that back to 3,000, please.
Okay, the next one, which y'all been waiting for, is the library. And what I suggested last week, this building is not in operation. I'm going to fund a building that's not in operation. That's why I came with the 230 for those two big buildings. That's where the 460 came from. And I don't know, this building will be down another six, seven, eight months, we're talking about a year. This building's not going to be operational. So I'm not going to fund three buildings that we only have two major buildings. The one in Willemark is, is really part of another building, another room. So that was my suggestion. Now, when it's functional, they're putting all the money in it, yeah, you're probably going to open up the library, you're not going to put in 220,000 and shut it down. And that's what you do when we sit these budgets, talk, that's how you talk, find it to save money, save money. He tells us to cut, 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 we try to cut. But if you're gonna spend 220,000 and do that with Biloxi Library, then well, you should not shut it down. But then you worry about that when it's open, not now, cuz it's not open. And the land was donated by William Riss family, to build the library on, and that's what the city did. If you shut it down, the land reverts back to them, and then building sits on the land, it's their building, but they won't do with it. But now that you're putting that kinda money into it, you gotta look at what you're doing with the money. My idea was from the beginning, did you really wanna spend that much money? Well, now you're spending it, you know, you already got half of it spent redoing the building. But I'm still, I'm not gonna use three buildings, but the 700,000, so I'm funding two buildings that's open, the West Biloxi Library, and Margaret Sherry, I mean, excuse me, the downtown library. So that's my suggestion, and that's why I cut it, cuz it'll be down to two buildings, period. Third building's not open, we don't even know when it's gonna be open. You look at that one.
We have a projected date of when that building, it will be open, back open in November. Okay, so.
If you're lucky, you're dealing with asbestos, you got a problem.
No, that's wrong.
Yeah, no, you know, you do, a major problem, right, a major problem.
Asbestos, we will prepare for the worst-case scenario, but it's not the worst-case scenario, it's a minimal amount of asbestos, so that's not an excuse to shut that library down.
Alright, we gotta.
So, so you're making the recommendation to cut the library budget by how much?
Right.
By how much?
That's all.
By 220,000, okay, Ms. Newman, in favor or opposed?
460,000.
Against, Mr. Demming?
I don't increase cutting it.
Huh?
I don't increase cutting it.
I can't, I'm sorry.
I do not support cutting it.
Okay, Mr. Tisdale?
Leave it at the current amount that's here, I don't support cutting it.
Mr. Glavine?
I'll defer to you, can you say, Barrett?
Well, there's already four support, so, or three, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm not in support of cutting, I'm not necessarily in support of giving the whole request for the increase, because we're cutting a lot of things, however, I'm not in support of cutting that library budget out of our budget, at all, that's, to me, that's, that's just not even an option. Yes?
I was referring to the, the his request.
Yeah. So, so the request is 83,000, right now, there's 47,000 increase in the budget. And so you're, you're requesting that that amount that's in the budget right now be cut by 220,000, I'm opposed to that. So, we'll move to the next item, and?
Well, there's a, and then, that's right, if it fails, it fails, but then you're gonna tell the taxpayers, what'd you give them an extra 200,000 for? We're not a building.
The building is gonna be, if the, okay, if the building does not open, we can come back and amend the budget, Mr. Lawrence, if, if the building does, it sets, we can amend the budget, and take whatever is not used for that out of the budget. We can amend the budget, if, if it goes longer than what they're saying, we can amend that. Go ahead.
Is that accurate? I mean, the, the.
Well, it's.
We have to, we have to fund them, once this passes, we fund them, we can't go to them and tell them to give us money back.
No, I don't think so. But basically, you know, well, let me ask you, your, there was a recommendation in the last school round, to re, raise what we had initially put on table, from 750,000 to 780,000. That's what, what's in your figure right now.
Mr. Tisdale made that recommendation.
Right. Now, you know, the reason why.
750 would've been a 17,000 dollar increase. He, he proposed a 47,000 dollar total increase, to make it to 780, which is 30.
733 in the prior year. Now, just give us a figure that we can work with.
Okay, so, right now, you proposed 220, there's not enough votes to support that, so someone else can make a recommendation, whenever we get to that, and we'll, we'll work, work, work through this, but I don't think the support's there to cut the 200, the support is not there to cut the 200.
That's why you have them.
Huh?
That's why you have them.
Alright, so, any other items, Mr. Lawrence?
Well, that, that, I was, um.
That was a lie.
On the, the CTA, is this 395 they have to have?
Yes.
In order, they have to receive a certain percentage from the municipality to be eligible for the grants that they receive from the government, and with the grants that they're receiving, the 395,000 puts them in the percentage that's needed, in order to receive the amount of grants that they receive from the government.
The reason I brought that up, because the, the library, West Biloxi Library, is shut down, and the CTA stops there. Has anybody talked to CTA for them stopping that Margaret Sherry? It's not that hard, we paid them a ton of money to do this, put all this stuff, there's only one on the CTA route, you can put them in what you want. So I'm saying that we need to talk to CTA, tell them to stop the Margaret Sherry Library.
Okay, alright, are there any other recommendations?
That one right there, let them stop the Margaret Sherry, put a little bus station there right now, cuz they.
We would have to create a new route, because they don't even turn on Pop Serry Road at all now.
You pay them 40,000, they're gonna be able to drive the bus where they want.
It's 3.8 miles from West Biloxi Libraries to Margaret Sherry, it's not unreasonable.
So what, yeah, so what you're saying is?
Is that a request that we can put into them?
You remember they, they tried out a trial route, a couple years ago?
Yeah, that was.
They ran it for a little while, and just, you know, did a head count, and came back to us, and said there's not enough to justify it.
That was, we're saying, while West Biloxi Library is closed, could they alter the route to where they went up Pop's Ferry, just to Margaret Sherry, and then turned around and went back to Pass Road, to where people going to, people who rely on the bus to go to the library, would be able to have library service, that's what he's asking.
We can ask?
I can't speak for CTA, I, it's possible that they'd be willing to alter their route.
So let's have that discussion, they're not in the room today, but we can have that discussion with them, and ask them if, if they'd be willing to do that, and if we have to alter the budget, 50,000, $10,000 to do that, then, we'll look at that.
Once in a while.
Okay, alright, any other recommendations?
I think that's all of them.
Okay, alright, Mr. Ms. Newman's out, out of the room, so we'll go back to her, Mr. Demming?
Just one, I know Dr. Tisdale's gonna cover just about everything else, and I can rebut any, thing I disagree with, that he brings up, my concern is, when I look at the, um, sorry, I've got all the library stuff in front of me, the capital outlay for Parks and Recs, I, I look at the department numbers, and I don't see, um, anything there for the, for the 25,000 that we talked about, to do the, the additional things we need to do at the, at the dog park, the, um, the shade, we have those blank poles, the shades were destroyed, we needed to replace the shades, the benches, and, um, we were gonna add an agility facility for the dogs, I think we talked about that, we discussed adding that 25,000 into the budget, but I just don't see it here, so, um, if you can help me understand where it is in the budget.
Well, the lighting was, um.
We, we did the lights, the lights are done in the dog park, right, this was a different issue that we talked about.
So the, this is additional amenities for the dog park?
Correct, this is probably the third or fourth time we've discussed this in the meeting, um, but it's okay, cuz we have a lot that we discuss.
Well, the, the lighting, of course, is paid for, and is ongoing right now, they're about finished, I think.
Right, we actually reopened the park today, Ms. Bell informed me, Director of Public Works, and so, but we, we discussed improving that, that park, it is, it's one of the, well, the pickleball court is the highest-used facility in that area, but second to that is the dog park. And we talked about plugging in 25,000 for the upgrades and improvements to that park.
So, you, you want us to put a line item into the capital list?
Yes, till we can get this done.
Yeah, it's, it, what's a little deceiving, is that, that, that exhibit that you have, it reads as capital projects, it's actually the capital equipment list.
Okay.
The list is not in front of you right now, but we can add 25,000 to that ongoing project, no problem.
Thank you, that's, I guess that's my proposal, is to add the 25,000 to the Parks and Recs for the ongoing project at the dog park, for the improvements that are necessary.
So that was the amount that was needed to do what, a shade structure?
To, to repair the shade structures that were destroyed, the benches, and then to add an agility course for, for the dogs.
Okay.
And I think we priced it all out, and I think the total asset we need is about 25,000, to get it accomplished.
Alright, Mr. Lawrence, are you in favor or opposed to that?
If you're, we just need a record.
Yeah. I didn't follow it, anytime, anytime it picks up a poll.
If, if the council is polled, and says that that's a good thing, we'll, we'll, we'll make that change.
I think that's what we're doing right now, I think.
We're doing now, Mr. Lawrence?
Lawrence is a yay, I support it, I proposed it.
I'll go with that, alright, so you have three yeses there, so.
No, dude.
Okay, alright.
I'll allow Dr. Tisdale to.
Everybody wanna take a coffee break?
I'm just kidding.
Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, yeah, a couple of things, looking at non-departmental, Diana, the non-departmental 173 is the seafood museum annual audit, and I think we're obligated contractually to pay for that audit, um.
13,000.
Don't we select two, do we select, do we get to select two audits out, or do we put it out on bid, for some reason, I'm thinking we do.
Probably, you're, you're out.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking for what we pay for our city audit, this is, this looks to be.
We're not consulted on that.
Beg your pardon?
We are not consulted on that.
Yeah, I think maybe we can check.
So, my understanding was the agreement, we were required to pay for that audit, and that's one of the things I was gonna ask us to cut, because we pick who does the audit, and so they said, if you're gonna pick who does the audit, then you're required, then y'all pay for it, and so we agreed to that. I, my proposal is gonna be to alter the agreement, to where they get to pick who they want to audit it, and they're responsible for their own audit, that's my recommendation.
Okay, but we paid for the audit in the past, my understanding was, it was included in the council's budget, and so we're moving it to non-departmental, that's why it appears here for the first time, and I appreciate you doing that to help track those costs. But, from what you said, if they're, if the seafood museum is going to choose who audits them, if I understand you correctly, Mr. Barrett, then they should pay for that audit.
So, the, I was, my understanding is, the reason that we pay for it, is because we, whenever the agreement was originally crafted, that the city said that they, that they required the audit every year, but we had to pick who it was, and so seafood museum said, well, if you're picking who it is, then you're responsible for paying for it, we agreed, it's in the agreement.
If you choose to do that, we can do a very quick resolution, um.
Yeah, that's just, and so my, my thought process is, because I'm not looking to add 1,500 here, and 2,500 here, like we're doing, I'm looking to cut, because we're spending too much money, and so, I'm, my recommendation is, cut the 13,000 out of their budget, let them pick who it is that does their audit, and we're no longer responsible for it, we amend the contract to reflect that.
Okay, I, I'd go with that, if, if you wanna choose the auditor, you pay for it, if not, we'll pay for it, and we choose the auditor, correct?
So can we take that 13,000 out, and then we'll come back with a resolution later?
They'll have to amend the contract.
So we have to vote on that, but, and we'll have to amend the contracts.
They take it out for now, yeah.
First, the first thing you gotta do, is put the contract on the table and change it, you can't do anything until you change the contract.
We all need to.
Now, to bring the contract to the table, and change the contract.
So, let's, let's put that on the agenda, for Tuesday's meeting, to amend the contract, and then, uh, and, and, whatever.
Take the money out.
Yeah, we take the money out now, because this isn't an actual, you know, the actual budget, hasn't been voted on yet. That's just, that's just my recommendation, but we do have to ask that, so, who's in favor? So, George?
Not in favor.
He's a, Mr. Demming?
I'm in favor.
So four, yes. Okay, so, I'm sorry for hijacking that.
It's okay, I didn't.
I had just asked about that.
I didn't mean to steal your thunder on that, okay. Um, we still, under revenue, we still sticking with a beginning cash balance of 9.6 million, that's still a good number, okay. I had mentioned, we can do this very quickly, I had mentioned earlier that I think we should consider raising the millage, I just said that, see a smile on the mayor's face, uh, for, for salaries and benefits for employees, I'm, I'm willing to see if we have a consensus on that right now. Do you wanna raise taxes?
Nah, but I suggested.
All in favor of raising taxes?
Let's do 3% increase for employees, you ain't gotta raise anything, a mill's 737,000.
Okay, alright, so you're a no, Mr. Demming? Mr.?
No.
Okay, so.
I'm a yes.
Okay, we know you're.
Okay, uh, and the reason for that, the reason I suggested that, was because the insurance, retirement, longevity, number of vacancies, so forth, okay. Let's go down to, uh, departments, the executive, or mayor's budget, um, is increased by 100,000 this year, is that correct? And, and I'm, I'm looking at the research I did before we got the update, but that's still accurate, I'm, I'm sure there's a reason for that.
B news primarily.
B news, okay, thank you. Um, on the, on legal in court, if, if you would, no questions, just a request, just a request.
I just wanted to clarify the inflation, uh, word, for Mr. Lawrence, uh, there is no inflation, this was, um, something the clerk did for illustration purposes, had he adjusted the old numbers for inflation, it would be over a million, but the budget is not moving, it's what it was at 994, which is about, um, 50, 60,000 less than last year, so there is no, he just added an illustration under his.
You're welcome attention at 237,000.
Yeah.
Alright, next, uh, next item, if, Diane, if you don't mind, it doesn't have to be today, this week, I know it's crazy for you, but in the legal court department, if, if you could break out under supplies, other services, and charges, and contractual services, if you could break that out for me, to see what goes where, I'd appreciate it, and like I say, there's, there's no rush, I'm good, good with the numbers, I'm just curious. Uh, under parks and recreation, uh, I don't wanna talk about the, uh, the water fountain, cuz the water fountain's here, it's been here for three weeks, one day we're gonna actually install it, uh, but not today, but parks and, I'd also like some outdoor fitness or exercise equipment at Pennzoil Park, and I've been kinda hammering this for the past year, I don't know if that's in parks, the parks and recreation budget for that.
11,000.
Equipment or hardware, but I checked with Ms. Bell, I don't think it is, but I can't speak for her, but I would, her estimate on that cost would be somewhere around 20,000, give or take.
20, I thought it was 11, but, whoa.
Well, we want good quality equipment, like they have in East Biloxi.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so anyway.
We're working out.
Uh, we're gonna work that, I'm writing that down, working it out.
15,000.
Okay, um.
20, okay, alright.
On the port, is that, uh, budget fig, I, I don't think it is, budget figure I had, I had was 2,775,690, but that was a weak goal, that's changed a little bit, right?
He was talking to him.
Port, the port budget, I think the departmental expenses are, increased a little since last week, and the same for water and sewer, right? Good deal, alright. The, uh, the next thing, if, if we considered, or will we consider, maybe rolling a mill from the general fund into the garbage collection and disposal, currently that's at two hundredths of a mill, a mill would.
The mill for fiscal year 24 is gonna be proposed at .37, to give us 237,000, to have the difference between collections and the actual cost.
Sorry, say that again.
Right now, I'm proposing .37 mills to go towards garbage collection, which would be 237,000 to make up the shortfall from what HCUA is assessing us versus what we'll collect from the citizens.
Okay, so that won't affect what, what the, the, what we'll soon be voting on, in terms of the monthly char, garbage charge for citizens, that would not affect that increase at all.
No.
This, this is just to fill the shortfall that we had, okay? What I, what I would propose is, that we consider, if you wanna get consensus on this, I would, I would think maybe we might roll a mill out of the general fund into this, or at least top it off, instead of 37 hundredths of a mill to one mill?
Right, but when we do the calculation, we're only short 237.
I see, I see what you're saying.
So .37 mills will handle that.
Okay, and you've made those calculations, and that's what we're gonna be looking at when we talk about millage, okay? I'll withdraw that entirely, alright?
Paul, Paul.
Yes, sir.
Talking of that, that's an enterprise fund, it's gotta be self-supported, can you help put money into it?
Uh, garbage, garbage is not, it's not an enterprise fund, just pour it on water and sewer.
Water and sewer.
Right, that's correct. Um, the, uh, next thing, is, I think we clarified the who pays utilities at the library, the library pays that, um, and you know, why such an increase, I just wanna point out that the folks who work for the library, they can, they're considered state, I guess, employees, not state employees exactly, but you contribute to purse, correct? So, so in that respect, you have the same costs that we have, insurance, um, our buildings fall under our property insurance, correct? But the contents, we don't cover the contents, do we? So if there's any kind of electronic, digital equipment, books that need to be repaired, purchased, uh, shelves, uh, those kinds of things, technology, um, you have to bear that cost, right? And those costs are going up, just like they are for the city and everybody else. Um, I would assume that, that you, the library board, I would, I guess, determines the salaries, and in order for a salary increase, you have to have some money to offer an increase, correct? Um, and that being the case, I would, uh, I would suggest, I urge my colleagues up here on this side of the bench, to stick with that 780,000 figure, uh, and I'll just make these general comments, you know, I, I was told by one of the council members up here years ago, you know.
You know, I, I was told by one of the council members up here years ago, you know, we have to take care of seniors and children in our community. I know that some of us are interested in history and maintaining that history, and if you've not taken advantage of the montage um, application or program in the library as you should, if you're interested in history. I know that, uh, some of us believe that we don't need as much print material, but we have those seniors who aren't technically savvy. We need to continue, uh, to do that, to offer things in print. But also, since we have more younger folks coming into the libraries, we need more technology, which I don't think they ever got the technology. When we talked about replacing computers, uh, we, we offered some funding, but not enough really to help with replacing all of that. Um, I know that access is important. It doesn't do you any good to have a library if you can't get to it. And, uh, you have a lot of seniors who don't drive. You have a lot of kids, obviously, who don't drive, and teenagers who probably go to the library unassisted. You know, I used to, I used to be a big, big user of the library. I don't use my library card that often, but I do on occasion. But that's because if I see a book I like, I buy a book. I can afford to do that. A whole lot of people can't afford to do that. It was interesting to hear the young lady who was here from Keesler pointing military families to the West Biloxi Library in particular. And it was interesting to see some of, I guess, the, the utilization data, um, that we got. It's kind of interesting to see how that, that plays out at each of the four different locations. I think we just, we opened the Wool Market Library, what, two years ago? Almost two years ago?
I think it was more.
Yeah, it might have been a little longer.
Longer than that. I think it was more like.
Yeah, two or three, and my hope would be that, uh, as the usage continues to grow, that we would expand that library. Um, having said all of that, uh, I think we should leave that figure that's penciled in at seven hundred and eighty thousand that we look to see if we have consensus on that right now, Mr. President.
Well, it's in the budget, so you'd have to have a, somebody asks to change that. To, from what it.
Yeah, okay, if that's the case.
But I mean, right now, in the budget, it's showing forty-seven thousand dollar insurance. It's sitting at seven eighty on the budget now. Somebody would need to change that.
Okay, and so far, we don't have anybody who's interested in changing that figure, is your point, I think, correct? Yeah, I'm good with that. Um, having said that, just, I guess these are policy questions more than anything else, but I'll, I'll just pose them. No answers required, but I really think we need to have a plan to address the homeless, uh, a plan to address the beautification issue of trash and litter. I know a year ago, we, everybody up here made comments about that, and that we really need to do something to recruit more employees. It's hard to provide the services we're supposed to provide if we're not manned at a hundred percent. I don't think we're ever manned at a hundred percent, but we've gotta do better than eighty-eight or eighty-four, eighty-eight percent, somewhere in there. You, you, we gotta do that. That's all. Thank you.
All right, we'll jump back down to Ms. Newman. Do you have any recommendations?
No.
Okay. Mr. Glavine?
All right, so, uh, what's the current number we have on the budget for the library, the current?
Three hundred and eighty thousand, no, I'm sorry.
Seven.
Seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, um.
All right, so originally, when we started this budget process, it was at like eight hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, the year before, it was seven hundred and thirty-three. Uh, so if we're gonna adjust it from, uh, eight twenty to seven eighty, uh, I probably could support that. Um, but again, I'd, I'd like to reiterate, we have to operate within the, uh, funding that is allocated, and we can't keep expanding services when we don't have a guarantee that we have that funding to expand services. And again, we gotta look at that business model. If we're open five days a week, maybe it makes sense in, in certain seasons, or maybe even opening four days a week. If that's what it takes to staff it proper, properly, and maybe get those salaries or those wages up to a higher amount that's desirable. So, um, I'll support my colleague, uh, since we have adjusted it from that, that original eight hundred and twenty to, uh, seven hundred and eighty. That, that seems reasonable to me.
Any other suggestions or anything? Okay, um. What's that?
Continue.
Okay. All right, um, I, I do have a couple of additional, some of them got hit. Um, on the Women's Resource Center, that original ask was for ten thousand dollars, right? And we had that as eleven five?
George had turned in a request for fifteen, or eleven fifty for Knights of Columbus, which the golf tournament benefits the resource center, so we discussed just giving it directly to them.
So are they going, so instead of, instead of funding the golf tournament, we're just giving them an additional fifteen hundred dollars? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
The city's the co-sponsor.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm okay with that then. Okay, that's, I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, Hibernia, last year was the first year that we'd ever given to them, and I believe that, um, last week, Mr. Tisdale made a motion to change that from ten to seventy-five hundred. I'm in favor of doing that, um, and cutting that back to seventy-five hundred for this year. We'll reevaluate, reevaluate that next year if there's consensus to do that. Um, so I'll start next to me. Mr. Glavine?
I'm okay with it.
I'm good with that.
Mr. Demming?
I'm good with it.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so that's, that's seventy-five hundred. Um, the Boom Boom Fund, we've always given them ten thousand. I know that last year, we gave twelve thousand, five hundred, but I, I try to be a realistic person, and if the library is coming and asking us, I believe that the library is more important than a fireworks show. I believe that there's, there's a whole lot on this page that's more important than a fireworks show. Well, it's a great thing, so I'm in support of cutting that back down to ten thousand dollars. Next year, we reevaluate it again, but there's, I can in good conscience, give them twenty-five hundred extra dollars and tell the library, we can't fund you. That, to me, that just doesn't make sense. And it's not just the library. There's, there's a list of other things on this page that are more important to our city than, just like cruising the coast. It's an amazing event, but if we're cutting things, you know, we look to cut in those type areas versus, so I'm making the proposal of cutting that back down to ten thousand.
Uh, I, I have to disagree on this one, and, and for this reason. We did give them the twelve, twelve thousand, five hundred last year. They did not come back this year and request any, a penny more. Uh, and I think that fireworks show, if we want to call it that, um, has been a family event for several years, decades even. Uh, Jerry Monroe is, uh, involved with this. His father started this before him, and it, it's, uh, one of the largest fireworks, uh, show in the southeast. Um, so I, I think this is different. The library, we actually gave them more money than we gave them last year. So we're not, we're not cutting the library. We're giving them more money than what they asked for last year.
So you're a no to that, Mr. Tisdale?
That, that sounds like a no, yeah.
Uh, I, I'll stick with twelve five.
Okay, so, Mr. Demming?
I, I would have to approve Mr. Glavine. We did increase the library.
All right, Ms. Newman? Okay, so leave it twelve five. And then I have one other question, um, on the.
Island will be happy to hear about that.
Huh?
Dear Island will be happy to hear about that.
Um.
And as well the fire, the fire boat.
In the, in the past, in the past, and this is just a, a que, um, in the past, we've given ten thousand dollars to the MLK Day Parade, whether it's here or in Gulfport. Have, and I know this year, that money wasn't utilized, and so it was given to the Juneteenth celebration. In the past, have we given ten thousand to each of those, or just the ten thousand? So I'm gonna make a proposal that we put both of those on one line item. MLK and Juneteenth, and do the ten thousand instead of the twenty thousand, since we've never done that before. That's a ten thousand dollar increase, and so put them both on the same line item, and they be used however the request comes in.
Are, are those two different entities?
Two different days.
So we, so we can't, we really couldn't combine them on one line item, could we?
Be cleaner, if we couldn't give them five each.
No, I don't know.
But rather than combine ten, and let them squ, you know, they're different events at different times, run by different organizations.
Okay.
One's in February, one's in June.
What's that?
One's in February, one's in June.
Then let's scratch that. Let's ask Felix what his recommendation on how, like, and, and we can vis, revisit this on Tuesday.
Right.
On what his recommendation is on that.
Okay, so we're gonna leave ten and ten.
Yeah, just leave ten and ten for now. We'll ask him what his recommendation is on that, on how we could split that up. Okay.
All right, just very quickly, uh, cyber insurance. I recall reading something about Singing River Hospital, ransomware and all that stuff. Maybe we all explore looking at that. I don't know what the cost is, but just.
We've just received, um, an inquiry from our insurance, uh, um, agent, um, asking us to, uh, complete some, uh, forms to, to be able, they'd be able to, uh, get a quote from us. It's gonna be very expensive, I'm afraid.
Well, and, and, and I know, we're just getting a quote, but I know that we beefed up our security on the, on the hardware end, but this, it just scares me to death. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, um, and then I just have, uh, like Mr. Tisdale, I have a couple of questions. I couldn't find it, but the Back Bay, the fifty thousand we give Back Bay, that is in the budget, correct?
Right.
Come in, okay, I just didn't see it anywhere. I want to make sure that that was there. And then seconding what Mr. Tisdale said, with us being a tourist destination, um, you know, I, I believe, and I know we've beat this and beat this and beat this almost dead horse, we have to do everything we can to keep our city clean. Um, not just the beach area, but our residential areas and everything, and we're not, we have to do a better job. And so I would love to see an effort put forth for however long it takes with us hiring these companies to get, to get the sidewalks edged, sidewalks that have grass growing over them, ditches that haven't been cut in forever. Um, to get our, make an effort, and, and I know that our public works department is short, and we're short in lots of departments. I had lunch today with a couple of mayors from other cities, um, different, um, elected officials, and it's not something we're just facing in this city. It's something across the entire coast. They're having trouble. Um, uh, had lunch with our new sheriff today, and even with increasing wages like we have fifteen percent over the last two years in the sheriff's department, there's still however many officers short. They're having trouble staffing it. Jackson County, the same thing. So it's not just, it's not just a Biloxi problem, but with that being said, I want to, I would love to see an effort in contractual services to get these things taken care of, um, and get our city cleaned up, um, and, and, and beautiful.
Let me, let me, uh, report on, on something that, over the last couple of weeks. I don't know if you've been to Keesler lately. They changed the contractors, and it looks like a college campus. So we did put a million dollars extra, I think, in, in contractual services. And we will be contacting those folks instead of doing things, you know, having our own crews do it twelve months out of the year. We can be intensely, you know, have an intense situation with eight months out of the year with, uh, doing some contractual things. And, uh, they were, you know, I had breakfast with the, uh, Second Air Force Commander, Michelle Adams, and they, we, we talked about that on the efforts that they did in changing contractors that do their, you know, uh, their ongoing, you know, year-round kinds of stuff. And we will be, uh, moving in that direction to, uh, uh, to, to make things happen with regard, you know, we can't do it in-house. And just like the, uh, the Miller Ave was researching, uh, although it's not a perpetual care cemetery, but we've got about seven people full-time on that situation where we could explore, uh, doing some things contractually for eight months out of the year, or, you know, putting more horsepower on the ground. But, uh, you know, we, we're gonna make some progress there.
All right, now, I, I know we've been working several, a couple of months on this budget, and, um, I think this may have been, since I've been here, is probably the most stressful budget we've had because of, of the increases that we had. I think three million just in insurance. Um, but I, um, appreciate the patience, everybody working together to get this done. And, uh, as a councilman, this will be the last one I have to work through, so I appreciate everybody working with me on it, and, um.
You was only gonna do one, you wouldn't listen to me.
We're gonna have to approve it, so.
I, I know we gotta approve it, but I'll, I'll go ask for last, any com, any additional comments before we end this meeting.
I know you got six million or seven million tied up in, uh, these contractual people, so, so. Why don't you just hire twenty people at thirty thousand a year? No, and let them work every day. Ain't gonna take it to anybody. Hire them strictly for that purpose?
Well.
You be waiting, I know you have to pay them insurance. I know you can't stand that, you're right, but I mean, these people taught you a ton of money to do the same stuff you can do yourself. You got eighty-five spots you got in the budget right now? If y'all funded eighty-five spots, then we not gonna hire. Hire somebody to do you some good. That's what it gonna do. Clean up the streets, clean up the cemetery, clean up the Highway Ninety. You know, 'cause right now, it's terrible. It looks bad, and you know that yourself.
Well, I don't say it's look bad. It could look, it could look better. I mean, we're doing everything we can, and you can't just go hire people. And if you got people almost like a, uh, a, a lifeguard, then that would be a way to do this too. But we've got, you know, uh, some, some rules as far as how many, how long people can work. If it's twenty hours a week, I don't know from a, but we're exploring all of those. But contractually, it's the cleanest and the, and the fastest way to do it. Instead of paying somebody thirteen sixty-five an hour, it might be paying twenty dollars an hour, but it's getting done. But we're not uplifting, uh, that thirteen sixty-five an hour to, uh, like seventeen.
If you had twenty people working with the city, you could work every day. You could have something, you could tell them to do something every day. They can do the battery, they can do everything. Unless you people that supposedly working on the water and sewer and that, do that, and it's not gonna cost you, but it's six hundred thousand dollars a year. I mean, it's pretty easy.
Okay.
All right, anything else, Mr. Lawrence? All right, Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
Not a thing.
You're not Mr. Demming, but.
I, I, I could be, if you want me to.
Tisdale, nothing, Mr.?
Uh, one, one thing I forgot to ask, uh, on, uh, health insurance, if there are any increases in the team member share, has that been accounted for yet? It has, okay, thank you.
All right, I have a motion to adjourn.
Move second.
I have a first by Mr. Glavine, a second by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? All right, thanks, everyone.